So I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council Ordinance Committee to order. 6:30 on November 25th, 2020. We are holding this meeting remotely due to Governor Charlie Baker's executive order on open meeting law during the quarantine and pandemic. And so I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Owen, we don't have any minutes?
I sent out minutes before the last meeting.
Last one.
And then I also sent two, um, two more minutes, uh, a couple of days ago. Did you, neither of you receive those?
I didn't get those.
I did.
Okay.
Do you, do you want to wait till the next?
Let's do, let's do the ones from the previous meeting that Tom hadn't had a chance. I think that if I'm remembering right, Tom had a chance to review. But I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve those minutes and forgive me for not knowing the date off the top of my head, but I can go back.
Yeah.
I can look.
I could tell you if you give me one second, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I, um.
That's fine.
One moment. Uh oh. Just doing a quick search here. Uh. Was it the 29th? Yeah, that was September 29th. You are correct.
Okay.
So, uh, motion approved the minutes from September 29th. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Owen Zarrett.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
And I as well, so, uh, motion passes. So you can send those over to Barbara, let her know that those are done. And we'll just, um, get those other ones next time.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, if you can't find them, I will send them again.
Yeah, I'll take, I've been having a little bit of issues with my email, but I'll, I'll see if I can figure it out. Okay, so that brings us to our current state of business. I'm hoping this meeting won't be too long. But I also want to make sure that we can discuss what we need to discuss and, um, have the opportunity to review some of this language that is going to get sent to the council. So just for everybody who's on the call, just so you know, the process here is the planning board had sent us recommendations, um, uh, that we had kind of deliberated together at our joint public hearing. And they came up with some language and we have been using that language to kind of, uh, come up with some further recommendations that we will then recommend to the full council or not, for the public hearing, which is set to be continued December 2nd at 6:15. And so, uh, Councilor Zarrett.
Thank you Chairman Derby. I just wanted to, uh, check. I, I don't believe you asked if there was, um, anyone here for public speak. I just wanted to make sure that we.
Thanks. That's why I need, that's why I need the agenda right in front of me. And all I have is these squares. So, um, yeah, so it's perfect. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on a subject other than what is on the agenda tonight? Okay, looks like Keith has his hand up. Keith Cernak.
Yeah, you're muted, sir.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, my name is Keith Cernak and I live in Silicon Valley, California. And I own the two and a half acres across from the site that we're talking about in the, in the business district and highway business corridor. And I've never gotten notification of any of these meetings. And I know according to the city charter, section 29C, that you have a legal requirement to put an advertisement in the Gazette. What about folks like myself who are out of state?
I think I'm going to defer to Jeff because he is the expert on notifying people.
Yeah, um, Keith, thanks for the question. I mean, we, we have, we've encountered this question, um, earlier in this process. The notification requirements for a zoning amendment is not, it's not the same as the requirements for like a special permit, for example. So the requirement is that there be a legal advertisement in the newspaper, but notice to property owners does not require. And so it was not, there were no notices to property owners as part of this process. So they leave a legal ad in the paper, I mean, this, this process, um, there were, there were two legal ads. One, um, I have been corrected on the dates before. So roughly, um, back in June, late June, there was a legal advertisement for the first set of public hearings. And then as this went to the council, there was a legal advertisement. And I would estimate that that was probably in, um, October. I don't have the exact dates handy. So it is different than, you know, a special permit, for example, where property owners within 300 feet of a project get notified in the mail. So there was no mailed notice.
Can I just add to that to say that, um, if you're just sort of tuning in on this, like what's going to happen is if, if this zoning amendment does pass, then all that's going to do is enable a business in the highway business district to seek a special permit. And at that point, there would be the notification process, you know, for all the butters. Like that would happen then, right Jeff?
Correct. Yes. Yeah. This is a, uh, it's a, it's a discussion that applies to the whole highway business district, which is rather large. But I think as Tom said, once there's a specific proposal or project that goes to the planning board, then that's when the, that's when you as a property owner will get notified at whatever the mailing address is with the city, um, through the assessor's records, the assessor's office. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anybody else, um, for, for public speak, anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, uh, what, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, uh, share my screen. And, um, I'm just going to just try to make this larger. Okay, so I'm hoping that you guys can see, um, what I have on my screen. And, uh, so basically what this is, is this is, uh, the language that we've been discussing these last few meetings, um, encapsulated into, uh, what it would look like within the, the zoning. And I, I can probably make this a little bit bigger. Let me just see, I've not, okay, here we go. So let's see if we can take a look. How's that look? Everybody see that okay?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. And I can even go up a little bit bigger if, if you want. I can probably, um, well, anyway, let's, let's go with that. Okay. Um, and so what I'll do is I'll just give a little recap, um, on some of these things that we've discussed and discuss if we feel like there's anything else we need to add to this. And, um, you know, look at the pros and cons of it, decide if we want to recommend this to the full council or, um, if, you know, I mean, and that, that would be the vote, I would say. I would say probably just as far as, um, keeping it clean when we do take the vote as to recommend or not, it probably makes sense to do this together. And then, um, either in a minority report or majority report, talk about the specific ones that, you know, you didn't agree with or whatnot. So as we go through this, um, so, uh, the, the ones, these are all, uh, this incorporates the planning board's recommendations. So let's just go through these and then we can, um, look at them further. So cultivation manufacturing uses must be accompanied by a retail establishment and shall not be subject to the 200-foot separation of section, um, 10.4, uh, or 10.10, 4.5. Cultivation manufacturing uses must be on a property, a minimum of three acres in size. Cultivation manufacturing buildings must be at least 100 feet from Route 10. Cultivation manufacturing buildings must be at least 150 feet from the property line of any abutting property located in a residential zoning district, the first 50 feet of which must be a vegetated buffer. Cultivation manufacturing buildings shall not exceed 25,000 gross square feet in size. For the expansion of an existing building, the planning board may, in its discretion, waive any requirements of section 8.1 and/or reduce the three-acre lot size to a minimum of 10.10.4.2B to 2.5 acres, except that any expanded cultivation manufacturing building may not exceed 25,000 square feet and must be situated 100 feet from Route 10 and 150 feet from the property line of a budding property in a residential zoning district. And the planning board may require a decommissioning bond for the removal of any cultivation manufacturing buildings greater than 5,000 square feet in size. So that's a mouthful. So I would like to, uh, at this point, open it up to the, the committee members, to just give some impressions and, and if you feel like there's any areas that we addressed that weren't, um, stated, or if there was something that, uh, in here that you didn't, didn't find to be agreeable or whatnot. So this is where we can talk about this. Councilor Peak.
I have a few things. I'll start with one that's a little nitpicky, but I, I just think it might be worth pointing out because we'd be kicking ourselves if we didn't do something about it. There are parts of the city that are not connected to North Hampton Street, but that are zoned highway business.
True.
Small parts, but they do exist in other parts of the city. And so I see Route 10 used, um, throughout and it might be, um, it might, I don't know exactly what the word, there's something like the main road or something. It might be wise to, to do that because, you know, if we're, if we're being honest that this is really a district-wide change and not, you know, just something, you know, specific to a single site, then it could come up that an interested party wants to do something in a part of the city that's zoned highway business that isn't Route 10.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great point. Um, and now Jeff, maybe, I, I had justified that in my mind that the other parcel of highway business is located on Route 5, um, and that there was no parcels over there that would be big enough to trigger this. And that was kind of the justification that I had planted in my head. I don't know if that's correct, but Tom, thank you for pointing that out. And so Jeff, what do you think about that particular piece?
I think this is a good time to be bringing it up. I mean, I believe and I can double check. I believe the only other area that this would potentially, you know, apply to in highway business is the end of East Street. So, um, I, I did not do lot area calculations myself, but I think, um, I think what would be an option is to, it's all adding, it's all, you know, in this case, a lot of adding some more text, but somewhere, um, um, you know, referencing, so like, and it might even be in that first, the first, um, the first part of the amendment where it's, it starts off in the black text and it says, "In the highway business", you know, we could simply say excluding the parcel zoned HB on East Street.
Okay.
I think we can, I think, I think we have the, we have the opportunity to, you know, exclude those parcels clearly. And I think, um, I think it's a great point. I, I don't know that that was considered. I think the, as we've all discussed, the intent was to look at Route 10. So it's not, it's not terribly complicated to make sure that we're not considering that East Street, those East Street parcels. And maybe, maybe, maybe they did get disqualified by their side. But people could always combine parcels. So we want to be careful of that, but we could just simply exclude it. Because I think that was no one, I don't think that was the intent at all with the, considering that area. So with some words, we can, um, exclude that area on East Street.
Okay.
I mean, so, uh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut in. Is there like, I, I, I'm, maybe I'm being, maybe I'm overthinking this, but like, is there a possibility that in some future point, some other part of the city might be zoned highway business? Like, is that a thing that we should be thoughtful towards or am I overthinking this?
I mean, I think if I could respond, I mean, I guess that seems far less likely. Because I think if you, you, this entire process would start over again to add, you know, a new area to highway business. And I think, you know, from what I've heard, I think looking at the whole highway business district in a, in kind of totality, got chalked up on the list. And if you were going to add a new area, if you were going to convert a new area to highway business, I'm pretty sure we would all be looking at the uses that would be allowed there and, and this would.
So we could just figure it out then?
Yeah. It, I think it's totally different than the fact that we have a highway business area on East Street that, to be quite honest, wasn't really considered as part of this. And we just want to make that language clear.
Does that answer your question, Councilor Peak? Do you think?
It does. Thanks.
And you had, you said you had more?
Yes. Did I miss, we had, we were talking last time about a decommissioning bond?
It's G.
G. Um, oh, yep. I, I went over my head. Uh, okay, great. I see that that's there. Yeah, okay. And then the F is the buffer, right? That's the.
Yes.
Okay, that's right there. Okay, sweet.
Uh, I think D and F talk about the buffer.
D talks about the setbacks. But when we're talking about the buffer between establishments.
Oh, between establishments. Yeah, correct.
That's F. Okay.
Yep.
Oh, that's actually, buffer between establishments is part A. A, yep.
Oh, yes. Uh, okay. Great. Well, thanks for being patient with me. I just wanted to double check that everything's there. I mean, my thoughts on this at this point are that, um, if this is going to be like a use that we permit, I think we've done what I think is a pretty decent job seeing to the, you know, the various, um, concerns, you know, and certainly I think with the decommissioning bond, my prior concern, which, um, which was a pretty serious concern about just whether or not, like, with the volatility in the industry, this was a good land use policy. I, I feel more comfortable with this than I did before. So I appreciate you guys, um, sort of being patient, hearing me out and having that conversation.
Thank you. Councilor Zarrett.
Couple things. So the more I thought about, the more I would go back to some of the discomfort I felt about, um, attaching, um, attaching a requirement for, um, retail to someone who wants to construct new cultivation. Because I, I understand what's been said previously about the intended use of the highway business district. But, you know, if, if all of us, if placing a separate cultivation, if having just an isolated cultivation space is not the intention of the use and all of a sudden you put a, a retail space connected to it, that's okay. I think that the, the intention, as we discussed all along, is to make this broad language and to open up opportunities for people who want to bring business into East Hampton. And I could think of, especially with the, the kind of the smaller size of the, the grow that we're talking about here, um, that someone who has, for instance, like some sort of just isolated R and D company that wants to do cannabis genetics and have a small grow space, um, and, um, you know, potentially in the highway business district, which they could theoretically have now, just in a, in an existing building. You know, some of the concerns that have been voiced by, by residents and some of the people who have been pushing back against this have been that this is kind of very narrow legislation. And, and I think that item is certainly a piece where I would agree. And so that, that's one. I think that I'd want to be really careful too about the, some of the discussion too about, um, the overall size of buildings for cultivation. In other words, you know, I look at like a River Valley Market sized space and that seems reasonable to me. I know that's in the 25,000 square foot range. I'm worried about some of what we've talked about where someone builds a building with a 25,000 square foot footprint and then builds up to have like 75,000 square feet of canopy. And I think the initial intention as to why we left this out of, uh, highway business district was for that exact thing. We end up with these buildings that, uh, even with a decommissioning bond, you know, that still kind of creates some headaches. And I think it creates, uh, it creates a site impact that we've, we're concerned about in the first place. So there's that. I like the fact that we were able to give a nod to fairness in regards to expansion of existing spaces. I'm, I can't decide how I feel about, um, removing the buffer. And like, I'll go back to the fact that I was concerned in the first place that we already have, we have one, well, we have two businesses with special permits in the highway business district for retail cannabis. One of them opened recently. It doesn't look like they're super busy. Another one hasn't quite opened yet. And I'm worried about what other people have voiced that the highway business district is, has a potential to have four, um, cannabis establishments. And look, I'm the biggest proponent for cannabis, but part of me wonders if, in general with this, if we should allow the industry to grow and stabilize before kind of really expanding, um, what we're allowing. And I'm worried that this sets other businesses up for failure. So those are just my thoughts.
As far as, you know, what I was thinking, I mean, really, um, I'm, I'm, you know, I feel pretty good with most of this. I think that Owen and I agree on, um, that, that one piece of the, um, potential grow space tripling if, if they just use, um, a 25,000 square foot footprint and then build to what they're allowed. So that, that was something that I was hoping to address, um, tonight. Because we did, we addressed the multiple building piece, um, because we felt like we didn't want to have four 25,000 square foot buildings there. Um, but I, I do also think that it makes sense to address like the, the total, you know, square footage of canopy, uh, because I agree. I mean, I, I think that if, if they went up, that, that quickly changes the, the, the character of what this is, you know? So that, that was my only, like, that was my only thing that I wasn't sure. As far as the, you know, the retail goes, you know, I, I think it could be interesting if, if someone, I mean, it's hard to play a sage here, you know? We don't know what's going to happen with the industry. We don't know how the industry is going to adapt, how it's going to change, how it's going to, um, morph as we potentially look at, you know, the federal government changing its policies around this as the state potentially, you know, deliveries coming online. I'm, I'm still, you know, social consumption is still a thing that is out there. You know, there's, right now, there's no places that are selling genetics. Like if you wanted to go buy a clone, where would you do that? So, and, you know, so I think that having retail attached doesn't bother me. Because if someone was doing a genetic, um, you know, growing for genetics, then, you know, maybe they could have a little store where they sold seeds or sold clones or, you know, things like that. So I, I, it's difficult for us to play the sage. And, and honestly, I feel like the people that are going to be making these decisions are going to be the ones that are going to be putting their money on the line. You know, I don't, I don't think anybody's going to want to, you know, invest in something that's destined to fail. But Councilor Zarrett.
So maybe, let me just look at the way it's written. So my only concern then is that, so the way I read the retail piece was that we meant cannabis retail. In other words, that like, I, I agree with you. I mean, if, if someone was doing just grow spaces and had like a garden, some sort of garden store, like what does it say? Let me just see it exactly. Sorry, I'm leaning into the screen because I'm trying to. Where, where's the part about attaching, uh?
So it's right here.
Retail establishment. So when we say retail, are we just, do we mean just broadly retail? Like in other words, we don't necessarily mean cannabis retail. It could be anything, like a restaurant or, uh, I, I've just, I'd be bet, I'd be fine with it if that meant more broadly a retail establishment, like, like retail in general, not just cannabis retail. Because if it just means cannabis retail, what we're really doing is legislating, I mean, at least at this point, in terms of the way that, um, the, the special permits are, we're legislating for basically one or two special permits. Right? So we're basically saying, hey, like, here's essentially one, one, maybe two special permits that are up for grabs, uh, that we're kind of, we're kind of making some, you know, some new zoning for. If you don't mean specifically cannabis retail there, I'm, I'm think, maybe I'm a little more open to it, but.
I mean, the way it reads, it's, it, it reads retail.
It's intended to be cannabis retail, just to be clear. I mean, that's, that, that was all the discussion coming out of the, the joint meetings. It, it could be clearer that at least it should, it should say cannabis retail establishment, at least for the purposes of clarity of what it was intended to say at the beginning. You know, I believe that there's an option for any, you know, I, I think there's nothing, especially when you look at the planned business development guidelines and the criteria, there's nothing that would prevent, um, uh, you know, a, a property to incorporate something that non-cannabis. So that's always an opportunity. That's just inherent in whatever their business model is. I think that it's probably going to run a little, it's going to run a little, it's going to be awkward to force a cannabis cultivation company to, you know, embark on some kind of regular retail that they're not equipped for. You know, I think tying it to retail is because most of these companies want to be integrated together with a place where they can cultivate their own and then sell it. And I think that was the, the connector for that. I'm not trying to lobby for or against it. But, and I have some, I have some information about the side, the building size when you want to, when, whenever you're ready to turn back to that. So.
So let's, let's just, uh, Tom.
Yeah, um, about this, this retail thing, it reminds me of a, uh, I, I don't know, this could be an apocryphal story, but it might not be, um, from, uh, that I heard when I was younger about a, uh, a community, uh, in the Pioneer Valley that tried to keep an, uh, let's say, an adult movie store from opening up. And so the folks who were there decided that they were going to open a plastic cup store that just also sold adult DVDs. Because there's nothing that's stopping you from doing that. I do think we should clarify this one way or another. We should either say that it's like, I mean, and for what it's worth, um, I understand what you guys are saying. And I'm like, uh, I, I don't feel deeply about, like strongly about this, but I do kind of feel like the idea of what the planning board was saying that sort of made sense to me was that this zone is supposed to be kind of a retail oriented zone. And so they don't want things going up that aren't retail oriented. And so if, if you guys don't agree with that and want to vote to recommend that we don't do that, then like, that, that's fine. But for what it's worth, I, I personally, I guess I, I mean, I, I guess I kind of get that logic. I'm, I'm not necess, I'm not at this point like deeply opposed to that line of thinking. But if we're going to do it, we should just say, we should, if, if you're, if we're going to do it, I think the bright way to do it would just be to strike that entirely, rather than allow it to be like, oh, we're going to build a cannabis cultivation facility with a, um, you know, a novelty t-shirt store out front. And then get around, uh, the, you know, uh, the, the special, or well, the, the licenses altogether.
That, that makes sense. Uh, Councilor Zarrett.
Well, I mean, I think this goes back to the initial concern. And again, I have, I have to look at the table of uses in a few weeks again. But my understanding was that the issue at hand was that you could cultivate in the, uh, highway business district, just in an existing building, whether there was retail attached or not. And the, and the issue is that, um, you couldn't, you couldn't build, construct a new building to do so. So right now, someone could purchase a large building and convert it for cultivation. So I think if the intention was to expand, just to allow new buildings, wouldn't the current intention for use apply?
Yep.
I didn't understand the last part of, I didn't understand what the, when you ended that. I didn't understand what, uh, you were trying to net.
Well, my question is currently right now, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, planner bag. But I thought that it's, anyone can purchase a building now in the, or at least a building in the highway business district and cultivate without the requirement to have attached, um, retail. Is that right?
Yeah.
So the, the, the problem was in regards to this amendment was that you just couldn't do it in a new building. So I feel like we're kind of changing, we're changing the rules. Like why can you cultivate an existing building without retail, but with a new building? You have to have retail.
Well, it, it all started with, with looking at, making sure that we can keep the character of Route 10 intact. Well, it, it all started with, with looking at, making sure that we can keep the character of Route 10 intact. I mean, that's where this all started. So, so every reference to existing building was because. When you drive down Route 10, there's, there's predictability. You know which buildings are existing. And the idea that you could, you could pick a building to cultivate, it wouldn't change the character of what we see for Route 10 now. And so it was two, it was two steps, kind of. Then we talked about, well, could we build a new building for cultivation? And the answer seemed to be yes, we wanted to try. But we wanted to make sure it wasn't too big. First of all, and we did, and then we started talking about, well, we don't want it to be right up front. On Route 10, because that would disturb, that would disrupt the character of what we see today. Then it was the idea of pulling it back, right? So we, we got all that done. And then, you know, there was really looking at what is the purpose of the highway business? You know, what types of uses are allowed there now? And it's the, it is automobile oriented, but it is. Goods and services, people coming and going, it's interactive.
Residential too.
And, yep, and residential, but it would, the just cultivation would, could, and I think this was the argument that I had recall hearing was. Just cultivation in new buildings could create a dead zone, so to speak, where there was really no. You know, because you could get staff who go in and don't appear out and there's no cars coming and going. So that was kind of how. The connection to a cannabis retail establishment came in. And presumably they would be up front and create the active, you know, maintain that active character of Route 10. And so that's kind of all that rationale got. Tied to cannabis retailer, I think because anecdotally, most, and I, this is anecdote, but. Most of the cultivators want to have the opportunity to set up a retail shop. So they're vertically integrated and have that all in-house, so to speak. So. That's kind of the summary of how it got there. I think, I think clarifying cannabis retailer is very easy in this language. But I think, um, councilor's there, it's raising the, the bigger question, which is. Is it really necessary? To have that as a component?
Right. And, and, you know, and I think that, and I, I hear you, I hear you, Owen. I, I think that that's a really good point. I think at this point, I'm. Comfortable with leaving the, the retail piece of it. And, and if, because, I mean, even in my example, if someone was doing genetics and they were, you know, creating these, these amazing genetics and they wanted to share that with seeds or, or with clones, that would be a cannabis retail. You know, I, I, at least in, in my mind, but I mean, and, and I think in the interpretation. If you're selling cannabis products, that's probably would be considered cannabis retail. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm still okay with this. I don't know if it's a deal breaker, but. You know, I, I don't, I don't know. So maybe, maybe we put this one, like, let's, let's let this one sit for a moment and let's hear what Jeff has to say about the size piece that he was, he's been holding on to for a little bit.
Thanks. The language that has changed so far in item. Sorry, in item. I can't read it on this version. E, so cultivation manufacturing ability shown at X D 25,000 square. It says 25,000 gross square feet in size of that. The word gross is small, but it's, it is the new language that's in there. And there's a couple of pieces to this. You know, the, this, this version got brought back to the planning board. At their November 17th meeting, and then it was a little bit cumbersome because their, their role has kind of been completed. They crafted the language and made the, the report. So overall, the planning board had no sort of unanimous position on, on, on any one component. But we did, we did have a discussion of this section and it was interesting because. In the early discussions, my, my research was really focused on footprint. If you go back to all the maps and all the analysis is that are part of the, the original packet, it was all kind of looking at the, the footprint of buildings. As the basis. And, and I was told by the planning board that. When they were reviewing it, they thought we were talking about gross square footage as well. So gross is. It's all the stories combined and you take the square footage of that. So, so that was informative for me. So I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to capture whether this is, whether this is one building or two or three. When you take, take one or two or three together, it's going to be the gross square footage. And we're capping that, the discussion that's been so far is capping that at 25,000 square feet. So said, said another way, if you have a one-story building, then it could be 25,000 square feet. And that, that's our, that's our River Valley co-op kind of size comparison. If you had a two-story building, then, you know, you'd be looking at a 10,000 square foot footprint. So it'd be a smaller building and you would have the second story, 10 and 10, that would be the 20,000 square feet. You know, I think one of the things that we talked about a couple of times is that in the highway business district. If we're, if we're just looking at other uses, you can build a three-story building that's 45 feet tall. And so I think there was a level of discomfort in. Saying you, you, you can't do that for cannabis, but you can do it for anything else. So. The idea would be if you had a 5,000 square foot building, which is relatively small, in theory, you could do a three-story. You could do a three-story cannabis cultivation building. I think that the likelihood of that, of three stories of cannabis cultivation doesn't seem. That viable, but I don't know for sure. But the language that I added as we were talking would be. After, in item E. Cultivation slash manufacturing buildings and think in parentheses, either one or multiple. Just to clarify that you could be one building or multiple buildings. Shall not exceed 25,000 gross square feet in cumulative size. So just to make it clearer that we're talking about the cumulative gross square footage of a building. To, to make it really clear that we're not talking about footprint anymore. So those are some minor, I think, potential tweaks here to kind of make this clearer. That we've, that we're trying to make sure we don't get a 25,000, so another River Valley co-op. Size building with two more stories above it. I mean, that became very clear that we don't want a 75,000 square foot gross square foot building. So, well, that's a long-winded explanation of this, but.
And, and if we, if we take a look at, if, with this language. You know, as we. Utilize our ability to see other new cannabis grow facilities, they're, they are generally one-story buildings. So what we would be talking about is, so this would, kind of, if they were doing a typical cannabis grow. Building that, you know, that we would see around, it would, it would be limited to one story if they went to 25,000 square feet.
Correct.
Okay.
That would be the biggest one-story building it could be.
Right, okay. Councilor's there, I see your hand.
So first of all, planner bag, I, that's helpful and that's more in line with kind of with my hope for. And that, that goes back to talking about maintaining character of the business district. I mean, I still have some concerns, but. Something just popped into my head, and especially in regards to going back to the concerns about. Where the zone abuts residential. Is there any way to include language about kind of. Placement of the cultivation, of a cultivation business. Located. As potentially physically. Like diametrically opposed direction to. To a residential space. Because, and the reason I ask this is because most of the concerns have gone for the residence is, is not. Retail, it's, it's the, it's the location of potentially being essentially up against. A cultivation space. And if there's any way to state kind of where on the parcel you could place it in relative to, I know we talked about setbacks. I'm just kind of thinking creatively here, basically being sensitive to. Some of the concerns from residents. And I don't, I don't know if that's possible, but it doesn't make sense what I'm asking.
I mean, I certainly understand what you're asking. I mean. And I'm sensitive to the concern, we've all heard the concerns, especially where, where the highway business abuts the residential district. I mean, it makes sense. I mean. My professional position is that you're establishing a 150-foot buffer from a building to a, a property line, which. Is easily triple any other setback that we currently have for anything in, in the whole ordinance. So. To, to go, to continue, to continue to do something to separate it further, I mean. It's, I think it's going to be challenging to come up with the right language to do that. I mean, I. You'd have to really look at the other areas as well. Where, you know, there are other areas where. The residential district abuts the highway business, but I don't think it's as, I don't think it's as pronounced as it is. You know, adjacent to Tasty Top. I think that's the most pronounced area where there's the, the district line and there's a house and there's a property that. You know, could be developed for this. But I, I believe that 150 feet is, is an important buffer for that. Building. And then, you know, the language I, we had talked a couple of times that there was, there was setback, there was other vegetation setback in the. Plant Business Development District. And I, I did do a deeper review of that and. Realized that it actually wasn't as clear as I think we all were expecting. So this section did get changed to add that the first 50 feet would be vegetated. Because I think it's important that with, without that other 50 feet of vegetation, there could be a driveway or parking spaces. Or other activity that it wouldn't be the building, but the other stuff. So if you take 50 feet of vegetated. That's, that's substantial too. The only other 50 foot vegetable we have is solar. And then you have an additional 100 feet where the building would be on the property line. So. I think I understand your, your question, but I think it becomes challenging to continue, to continue to push it farther from a residential setback. That's just my quick response, I guess, to, you know, absorbing what you're saying.
And, and I think I, I understand that as well. And I thought about that too. And then I was, then it kind of brought me to the, to the place of like, what else could go there? And, you know, and if you thought about like, what else could go there? I mean, you could have a 24-hour gas station, literally. I think the setback's 35 feet. You know, so you could have a gigantic car dealership that has lights on 24 hours a day for security. It goes all the way back, you know, or, you know, and, and if we're looking at other properties, you know, I think the one next to. Next to River Valley in the back, there's some residential there. But I, I believe that, I don't know where the property line is, but it would be probably at least 150 feet from the houses. I know that. But I, you know, I think that. It's, it's tough. But I, I think that the buffer and, and the vegetative buffer, I think that. You know, that is a good, it's a, it's easy to understand. It's a good start. So everybody knows what's expected. Council Pete.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, like. It's difficult with all of this stuff because. Just for me trying to imagine some of these things, it can be tough. But yeah, if we're talking 50 feet of vegetation and then a further 100 feet of setback. I mean, that's pretty extensive. And that's. Yeah, again, like Justin, more extensive than anything else anywhere in the zoning ordinance. At all. I mean, I think that. I, 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 I also agree that it's, it's important to be sensitive to the, you know, to the concerns. But I feel like. Having a, a buffer or a setback that's, that's three times bigger than anything else in the zoning ordinance. Goes a long way to being sensitive to those concerns, especially when a third of that has to be vegetation.
Okay. Any, any other thoughts, councilor's there?
No, I was mostly just thinking out loud. And I do agree that, that we, that the, the, the language as it stands is. Pretty substantial in terms of what, what was crafted here relative to what we had anywhere else. So that is worth noting. So thank you.
Yeah. And, and I would, you know, and I would also say is that this potentially is an issue that we, as a committee, could come back to at some point. To look at, applying to the whole highway business district regardless of cannabis. You know, because I think those, those couple of things that I mentioned, you know, if I was a property owner, I would not want those things right up. And, and then, I mean, and the, the list goes on and on. I mean, TJ Maxx and, you know, giant grocery stores and, and liquor stores and have deliveries, all, you know? So having this buffer, I think, makes sense in highway business as it relates to residential. Because of all the potential uses that could go there. So, you know, I'm happy at some point for us to revisit this, to look at a global. You know, separation between highway business and, and residential. But that's not what we're doing right now. So. So any, are there any other pieces of this that we want to discuss? Or, or tweak before we feel like, I mean, I, I feel, like I said before, you know, I feel we've spent a lot of time on this. And I feel like we've gotten it to a pretty good place. Where we are balancing the needs of the community, where we're balancing the needs of highway business district. And we're, you know, allowing for potential. I mean, if we pass this, it doesn't mean anybody's going to use it. And, and if somebody does use it, it doesn't mean, even if there is another cannabis place, we, we have no idea if that, if. The other cannabis places are ever going to come to fruition or not, you know? So. You know, this is us deciding whether we think that cultivation in highway business in a new building is okay, since it's okay in an existing building. And, and what parameters do we want to have in place for that? So is there anything else that we want to take a look at? And then I can, I guess, once we do that, we, I'll open it up and see if people have comments, but. Planner bag.
I think just one other, you know, again, the plan, the planning board reviewed it and they, they talked for a while about kind of almost each element. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the planning board. It was, you know, like, like I said, there was no unanimous behalf to recommend a change, but. The one that stuck out to me. That I wanted to just bring up is, is related to the decommissioning bond, so item G. So there were at least a couple of planning board members who felt like. This should say that the planning board shall require a decommissioning bond rather than may. So, so a couple of planning board members felt strongly that this gives, you know. Discretion to the planning board and the concern would be whether the planning board would decide to use it later on. So, you know, it, it had like both sides of the coin, which is the other people, you know, so at least someone else said, well. We shouldn't necessarily require it because we don't know the circumstances, circumstances or how big the building is. So. Once it's automatically required, it, it becomes a potential burden for someone. And so that, I, I did want to mention that there was a, you know, there was an observation that that could say should, I mean, that should, that. Shall. And I did want to be clear that, you know, the city solicitor was fine with this idea. And I added in as a threshold, some kind of benchmark, the 5,000 square foot building. Just because at some point, we might, we have no idea, like, there could be small entities, there could be a small building. And if you, if you, you know. I guess, I guess it could say may require decommissioning bond for any building, really, as long as the word may is there. If it's a shall, you know, if there was a shift to say, is, if we should do this all the time. Then if, if it turns to shall, maybe we should keep a, a square footage where. You know, the whole discussion of this was larger buildings being difficult to repurpose. That, that was really the impetus for this. So. In a 5,000 square foot building. You know, they, they get repurposed over time, all the time. So. It wasn't the small buildings that were the biggest concern. So that was the idea of the 5,000 square feet is pretty common building size. You know, and, and it seemed excessive to require it for any building, but. So that was what I wanted to add is just the, the difference between may and shall there.
Thanks. Do either of my committee members have any particular proclivity for may or shall? Council Pete.
I like the idea, maybe this is the, the strict version. Of saying that they shall for any building. Over 5,000 square feet and may for other buildings. Subject to their discretion. That's, I mean, if you, if you just want to be like. Sort of a, you know, strict for like, you know, I mean, because I don't know, there might be some building that was built in this that you just look, that you just look at it and you're like, oh, wow, there's absolutely no. that you just look, you just look at it and you're like, oh wow, there's absolutely no use that any other future business would have of this particular structure. I mean, and that, that's like, if, if we're trying to be strict on the whole land use issue, that's, I think, how you do it.
Now, I, I guess I'm, forgive my ignorance, but Jeff, do you know, is, is requir- requiring a decommissioning bond, how much, how, how much of a burden is that? How much money is that gonna, um, potentially require someone who's looking to, to put this building? I mean, is it prohibitive? Like, is this, does this G make it so there, nobody's going to ever use this? I don't know.
I mean, we don't have a deep, um, set of examples to, to, to look at, but, but we have solar projects.
Right.
So the past couple of solar projects, um, have required a decommissioning bond. And I believe that if and when a project comes in for, for this, for the, under this section, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's going to come up. I'm pretty sure this, especially if it happens anytime in the next couple of years when this is kind of fresh discussion as to why we were talking about this. What, what I would expect us to do is that we ask for the applicant to submit a, you know, estimate, um, from a, from an engineer of, as to the cost to demolish the building. And then, um, that becomes the basis for the bond amount. And I think that where it's been more challenging is we've seen a shift from just getting, um, an insurance kind of bond and some of the fees, they, they, they basically put it in escrow. And the, the city has control of, of that. With some of the solar projects, they've begun, some of the municipalities have begun to ask for cash bond. So, so, so for the recent, um, solar project on Park Street, the decommissioning for that project to take down all the solar panels and to, you know, remove any of the equipment and replant it with grass was about $120,000. And in that case, it was a long discussion and they, they ended up not submitting cash. They did the, the traditional bond. So, you know, I think for a company, they put up, they have to, they pay for a percentage of that cost to post the bond. So I think the burden could be a little bit financial, but the burden could also be that need to have an expert, have someone else on their team who does the bond and gets that situated. So at, at some level, you would think that a cannabis developer who's proposing anything bigger than 5,000 square feet would have a team with them so that it's not going to be the final piece of financial, you know, cost that puts them over the edge. But it is, it's going to be one more thing for them to deal with.
Right. And, and I guess, I guess where I was coming from, fellow committee, committee members was from the, the place of like the equity. Are we, are we adding an additional burden that in, by doing so, is going to make this more prohibitive for someone who might've been in a, you know, less situated place to, to bring this forward, you know? As, as we review all our ordinances, you know, I, but that, that's just, that just crossed into my head. So Counselor Pete.
Well, just for what it's worth, from an equity perspective, um, for this sort of thing, I, I would be pretty open to talking about this for large buildings, kind of in general, you know, in the future, not just cannabis. I mean, I don't know if you've seen a lot about, I've been reading a lot about, um, what do they call this? It's like something really spooky and weird, like shadow assessments or whatever, where a lot of these big national retail chains are trying to specifically build buildings using like materials and construction techniques and whatnot that deliberately bring their assessable value down to as little as possible. And it's leading to like Walmarts in the south that are like falling apart after 15 years and they'll just walk away and leave that property there. You know, you've brought up like a TJ Maxx or whatever, you know, these stores like this. That, yeah, the, the, this, this is for some of these sort of, especially in these auto oriented domes. This is like a real problem in some communities. And so from, just from an equity perspective, like we're talking about this here because this is the sort of big, single story building in an auto oriented area that someone's actually talking about building, which prompted this conversation. But like, I'm, I'm not against the idea of talking about this for a big box store or a chain store or, you know, what have you, you know, that, that might come in and present a similar situation.
Yep. No, I think that's fair. And I think there's a couple of those things that I guess we're going to have to put a pin in and come back to and look at applying towards the whole district. But I, I, but that being said, I'm fine with it saying shall as well. So I, I don't know on how you feel, but, um, either way for me is fine.
I like Tom's, I, I, well, do you mean shall for greater than and may for less than?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that. It's a great compromise. Um, I mean, I would just point out that any applicant, well, at least from my understanding in the industry, any applicant that's going to be able to, uh, build a, a development like we're talking about here, purchasing and buying a new, and building a new building, that's probably not representative of the, of the equity, uh, community, at least from what I know. But maybe I'm totally wrong, but, uh, but so anyways, uh, the decommissioning bond's a good idea.
Okay. Awesome. So, um, I think, unless there's any other pieces of this we want to deconstruct, I'm happy to allow people to comment. And then, you know, potentially we can look at either recommending this to the council or, or not. And then ending the meeting so we can all think about Turkey tomorrow. So, uh, because I did say that I wanted this to be a shorter meeting. So, um, not, not that I'm rushing it, but if there's anybody, uh, on the call that would like to make a comment, um, just go ahead and raise your hand and, and, uh, just try to keep it to, um, three minutes if you can. And it looks like right now I see Keith Cernak again.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I haven't been in the other meetings, so I don't know if this has been resolved or not. Is there a setback in the highway business corridor between marijuana retail establishments? In other words, a 200 foot between establishments or not? I, I believe I read that somewhere in past documents.
Nope, that's correct. The, um, we, we had created a 200 foot buffer between cannabis establishments. That, and when we created it, it was, uh, we were thinking more of downtown business, but we did end up applying it to highway business as well. Um, and that's one of the things we're looking at modifying within this.
So, so currently it exists, that exists and it has to be modified?
Yep.
Yet to be modified. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
If you look, uh, at the, at the bullets, uh, uh, point A, uh, says that for, uh, for this sort of thing, it shall not be subject to the 200 point, 200 foot separation of 10.10.4.
Right. But as you read that, you're looking at the cultivation manufacturing use. This must be accompanied by a retail establishment. Is that retail establishment, the, the 200 foot separation? Uh, and again, I haven't been in previous conversations, but as I read that, you could have a retail establishment and a cultivation on the same piece of property, uh, but they have to be 200 feet apart, not necessarily 200 feet apart between various retail marijuana, um, providers.
Yeah, I, I think the intent is for, um, it not to apply to, to, you know, um, buildings on the same parcel, but it would be applying to different businesses.
I, I, see, I, in, in A, I don't see that. I mean, just as a layperson looking at this, I don't see it.
Yeah, it's, it's, so the first thing that we are going to clarify is, um, where it says retail establishment, that I, I have, I'm working on another draft just to capture some of the changes. That will say that a cultivation manufacturing use must be accompanied by a cannabis retailer. So that, that, that's the conversation we were having before is that the cannabis, the cultivation and retail shall be combined together on the same parcel. And that's the pattern that we've seen here is they're, they would want to be integrated and shall not be subject to the 200 foot separation. And then it's that section 10.10, 4.5, which if you looked at that section, that's where it says that cannabis retail establishments shall be 200 feet from each other, from, from property line to property line. So I think that, just to be clear, that that's proposed to be removed in the highway business district as a part of this amendment.
Thank you. Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, no problem. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay. I think I don't see anybody. So.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, go, please go ahead.
What I wanted to ask is, you know, um, what I, what I've tried to do is capture at least a summary. And that, so in the text that follows, it's just headed, it's the heading under note. I've been trying to, I, I think it's important, um, and I wanted to confirm with, with this group that this could accompany the language for people who want to have an understanding of each section. So that, um, it's not codified, it's not part of the regulation, but it's just intended to kind of give an overview of some of the elements. So the, the text of the ordinance is italicized and then there's just kind of a general explanation of what it means.
Yes.
Um, and, you know, part of the reason for this is to, to help create a legislative intent so that, you know, we are, we can kind of have this understanding of why the section was created and what it's supposed to do. I mean, it's, it's not overly technical, but it's intended to help kind of summary of what we're, what we've been talking about. So I just wanted to make sure that that was still something that you felt would be good to forward along with this, with the amendment.
I think, I think it's very important. Um, and, and I think that what, what I would like to do is, um, I would like to, as soon as you finish the, um, the notes from the, the few little tweaks we made tonight. If we could, if we could forward that to the full council, just so everybody has plenty of time to review it. Um, and, and in that way, it's part of the, um, it's, it's too late for it to be in the packet, but we can still forward it to everybody and, and have Barbara, um, even, might even be able to get pegged to create it as an amendment to the, uh, agenda, so it would go into the public record.
Yeah. And, and I, I think it would be totally laborious, but, um, just to give a quick summary of the changes, they're, they're very minor, as you said. Do you want to, let me share my screen really quick. I just want to make sure I got the things that we talked about while we're, while we're up here.
Yep. Let me, um, real quick, I will make you. Okay. So you should be good to go.
Okay. Okay. So, um, I, I failed to include this one, so. I may take another look at this, um, before I send it and just make sure that, that if there's no other way to denote that. So the first sentence here is in the highway business excluding the HB district on East Street. There might be a better, there might be a more concise way to say that, but I think that that would be the place.
Yep.
To acknowledge that we're not talking about that East Street area. And then, um, in A, um, it was really simple to take out the word establishment and just add in a capital, um, cannabis retailer, uh, in capitalized letters in that corresponds with the text in the ordinance, the defined cannabis retailer. Then in terms of E, um, you know, cultivation and manufacturing buildings, whether one or multiple, shall not exceed 25,000 gross square feet in cumulative size. So I'm just trying to make it as clear, as clear as possible that this could be one, one building with 25,000 gross, or it could be, you know, it could be two, it could be two 10,000 square foot buildings. And the cumulative size of that would be 20,000 square feet of growth. And then under F, I just added, um, gross square feet after that 25,000, because I was not there. And then based on the conversation, so G would be that the planning board may require the commission, decommissioning bond, um, for buildings less than 5,000 gross square feet in size and shall require a bond for buildings greater than 5,000 gross square feet.
Okay. Oh yeah, perfect. Counselors, do you concur that those are the things that we talked about? Okay. All right. So yeah, that, that, that seems pretty fair. Is there, is there anybody else that would like to make a, a comment or a question from the public? I want to make sure that I give ample opportunity. Yes, Cot.
I actually had a question. I was trying to figure out how to raise my hand and I couldn't.
That's okay, no problem.
I actually had a question, um, in regards to the 2.5 acre parcel. Now, what if a cannabis establishment only had 1.257 acres? Would they still be able to expand on that property?
Jeff, you, you, I don't, uh, let me, let me see. I need to look at my paper again, but hold on. Trying to find it. Okay. So it says for the expansion of an existing building, the planning board may, in its discretion, waive any requirements of section 8.1 and/or reduce the three acre lot size to a minimum of 10.10.42B to 2.5 acres, except that any expanded cultivation manufacturing building may not exceed 25,000 square feet and must be, must be situated 100 feet from Route 10 and 100 feet from the property line of a budding property in a residential zoning district. So maybe, Jeff, can you, um, help me decipher that real quick? Because it seems like the, it, it, it's within the planning's board discretion, but then it, then it talks about 2.5 acres, so, um.
Yeah, the, the 2.5 was a back of the napkin look at, um, it was a look at the parcel that Apple Col is currently exploring and, and it's adjacent parking lot. I think was intended to capture the 2.5 to make sure that, I, I think Cot's raising another good question. And I, it's the parcel that I think Cot is asking about, uh, one, I forget what he said, 1.67 acres is, is the location that he's looking at.
I mean, would it be possible? And I don't know if this is, I mean, for the, like, to keep it, um, at the planning board's discretion around the expansion and, and, and not necessarily dictate acreages? I mean, I don't know, I'm just spitballing here. I mean, because, because having, I mean, like, I feel, in, in my experience, I feel relatively comfortable with, you know, allowing the planning board to have discretion as it relates to issuing special permits. So. And I don't, I don't know how the other counselors feel about this piece, you know? But the more specific we get, the more, um, it limits potential, um, people that are in existing. Like, I don't know, the one next to the post office, what kind of acreage they have? Like, if they wanted to expand from their, um, you know, initial big barn?
Yeah. Okay. What I did in the, in the other version is I struck, I think it's easy, it's easy to do, that's for sure. But, um, the implication, I have a question about the implication, but right now, so for F, planning board may, in its discretion, waive any requirements of section 8.1 and reduce the three acre lot size of, um, yeah, there's an extra, there's a, there's an extra wording here. So it would just be taking out the minimum. It would take out the minimum.
Okay.
It would allow the planning board. So the only thing that, and I, I think that's fine. I think for, for Cot's purposes, you know, on, on a smaller lot, as like a, a 1.6 acre lot, the, the most likely the thing that's going to dictate the size of a building at that point is going to be the lot coverage.
Right.
And other regular building setback. So I, I think on a small lot, there'll be other constraints that will keep the building size, you know, regulated.
Right.
Um, and I think, you know, what I think, the 2.5 came from looking at the parking lot adjacent to that. If, if that were acquired, it would be 2.5 and that was the intent was to maybe allow that with a little bit bigger. But I think taking out the minimum is the way to do it.
Okay. I mean, I, I feel comfortable with that. I, I don't, I'd like to check in with my, my colleagues here. Counselors Eric, Counselor Pete, how, how do you guys feel about that?
I'm comfortable with that at this point.
It fits in with the intent. You know, the intent is that if you have an existing building and existing property, it is going to, it could be hard to meet all of those requirements until you really explore it because you're taking existing structures and trying to meet, you know, setbacks and things like that. Whereas if you're on a, on a new site that you're developing, you know, Whereas if you're on a, on a new site that you're developing, you know, from scratch, you can design, you can design it to be in compliance, so, so I, I think it meets the intent of, of offering the flexibility.
Okay, so I, I think, and Kot, does, um, if we, if we amended it like that, um, how, how would you, how, how, how would you feel about that?
I mean, I'm fine with that, yeah, as long as it's, there's that flexibility for us to possibly expand in the future um to, based on the lot size.
Right. And and I think, I mean, from my, from my perspective, I feel like entrusting the plan, planning board to make that decision at the special permit level, to me, makes a lot of sense. Um, and and I think as we looked at, you know, changing the parcel size across the district, it gives people that are reusing existing buildings a little bit more flexibility. So that, that's why I feel comfortable with that, so. Um, but thanks, Kot, appreciate you bringing that up, because.
Yeah, I, I got one last thing. Um, um, during the last meeting, not the meeting here, but I was a little concerned with what Harry mentioned, and it brought me back again to the point of inside cultivation facilities being having to be a certain distance from one another based on cross-contamination, just that possibility. So I, I mean, I, I don't know what time, type of ventilation system they're gonna use for odor control or anything like that, but um I think it has to be at least two-hundred-feet distance from cultivation to cultivation facilities.
Well, I think that, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but I think the way it's written is those, the, the cultivation would have to be a hundred feet from the road, and if they're on opposite sides of the road, that means there would be at least a two-hundred-foot distance between cultivation facilities. That's what I was gonna say, I mean.
Yeah, and that would be, yeah, I, I think you're right, sorry, yeah.
No, that's no problem, no problem.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure at, at least we had that specific distance between cultivation facilities.
Yep, I think that, that's, that's a good one. Okay. Uh, Counselor Kuzinski.
Hi, uh, just to respond to Kot's question about the two-hundred feet, I think we're talking about a hundred feet for anything new. Any new construction, if I'm not mistaken. If an existing building were to be used for cultivation, that existing building would also have to be a hundred feet, clarify that for me, please.
But I, I think that the existing building that, if, if we're talking about Cernac, i- is, is a hundred feet from the road.
Okay, but in general, there wouldn't necessarily have to be a hundred feet back.
N- not if it's an existing building.
So it could be something less than two-hundred feet.
It could be, it could be.
If it was an existing building across the street from a new cultivation facility, just trying to keep that in.
Yeah, yeah, and and I think that, and that's a good point, um, but I think that if, if I was building a cultivation facility and I was worried about cross-contamination, which would be, you know, if they were doing genetics and they had male plants pollinating, um, I would want to make sure my cultivation facility was set further back and was also had all the state, most state-of-the-art filtration system to make sure that none of that got in. So, uh, Counselor Eric.
I mean, if you have a cultivation facility where pollen's escaping to cross-contaminate other cultivation facilities and you've got a problem inside and you're all, you're gonna see a lot of seeds, so.
That's true.
I mean, but sure, I mean, it's, it's a, I, I thought we went through this when we were deliberating the entire ordinance and kind of said this wasn't a thing, but um, yeah, I mean, whatever the group decides on.
Counselor Peak.
I mean, my other point is just sort of broadly that if, if you have a, a facility that's set up in a way that things like that are gonna be able to get in, you probably want to be really thoughtful about that if you're placing it on Route Ten to begin with, because there's all sorts of trucks that are blowing by with, you know, who knows what sort of airborne particulates are gonna be getting picked up and whatever, so I just feel like, you know, I, I, I'm not an engineer, but like, if this is something that, that is a concern, like, maybe being thoughtful about sort of where the air intakes are situated or whatever might be important, but uh, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I, I'm, I'm not I'm not overly concerned about litigating it right now.
Right, that's true. And Tom, you bring up a genius point, literally the neighbors could be vindictive and just plant an entire backyard of male plants. And you know, so, so I mean, that, that could be a reality too. So, anyway, so, does anybody else from the public have any comments or questions? Okay, um, I don't see any.
Sorry, I actually got one more. Uh, I'm looking at C, getting back to what Counselor Kuzinski was mentioning. Um, the Cernac site currently right now is actually about an eighty, a little bit over eighty feet from the road. Um, so we're, we, we're not, we're not hitting the hundred-foot threshold.
Okay, and I don't think that applies to, that, that hundred-foot setback does not apply to existing buildings for cultivation.
Not for expansions either?
For an expansion, for an expansion, you're looking at F. So we, we've had some discussions, sorry, um, Counselor Derby, is it okay if I?
Absolutely, please.
We, we've had some discussions about, you know, existing buildings are totally fine as is. Um, and then Kot, as you've been to many of these meetings, you, you asked about what about expanding an existing building, and so, you know, we, we did add that an expanded building cannot exceed twenty-five thousand gross square feet, just like a new building. And has to be situated a hundred feet from Route Ten. Um, because that, that was the exact character issue that was brought up for new buildings, so it didn't seem fair for, just because you started an existing building and you could all, all of a sudden bump up super close to Route Ten, so you are, you're, a future expansion would be subject to a hundred feet from um Route Ten. I was just doing a little GIS look at your property that you're, that you're exploring in the, the back building that you, the, the brick, the brick portion of the back building there is a hundred and fifty feet from Route Ten now. Um, the retail part is closer, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be fine.
Yep, okay. So, uh, unless anybody else has any questions, I think I would be happy to entertain a motion. Unless you want, unless there's, you'd like to have some more discussion.
No, I feel like I've about ready.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. So I, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. Um. What exactly would this motion say in total? Like, uh, there's just, I'm having to make them.
Yeah, 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 so I, I think it would say to um recommend to the full city council um, the, the language as updated um, uh, for the proposed cannabis amendment in highway business. I think that would be fine.
All right, so I'm moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, and so just remember, this is, this would be a motion that would just be our recommendation to the council, it doesn't mean anything is going to pass, so. Um, Counselor Eric.
Um, so I'm going to vote no, but just, I want to qualify my statement just by saying that I still have concerns, and that's why I can't recommend all of the language. Um, I, I like a lot of what we talked about tonight, and, but there's still concerns of mine. Um, so that's, that's the reasoning for my no vote. Um, and uh, so I, I am a no.
Okay, and so, and don't, you can also, um, when we, when we report this out, you can give them a, a report or whatever, I don't know if that, if it'll be a minority or majority, I guess I'll have to see what, how Tom.
Well, that's part of my reasoning too, just that way I could, it gives me, you know, more of a platform, for lack of a better term, just to explain it, you know, and so we can see what happens.
Okay.
The full council, yep.
Counselor Peak.
I'll vote aye. I, I still have some, uh, there, there's still some stuff about this that I'm not sure how I feel about, but I think that we've done the best job we can, and this is, this is, I think this is a good thing to bring forward to the council, and we'll see where it goes from there.
I agree, and so I vote aye as well, motion passes, which just means we recommend it to the council. So, um, Counselor Eric.
Yeah, just to clarify, I think this is great to recommend to the council, I just wanted to make sure that it's complicated, right, so. Um, I don't, I'm not necessarily condemning the spirit of this, I just wanted to be able to speak more to some of my concerns, and so that's, that's why I wanted that in the record.
Fair enough. So, um, I, I am happy to not um conduct any other business tonight. Um, so if, if it so uh suits my, my fellow council members, I'd be, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, it's just, we'll figure out uh our next meeting at some other point.
Yeah, I think that probably makes sense.
Yeah, 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 okay. Uh, so moved.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Uh, Counselor Eric.
Aye.
Counselor Peak.
Hi.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate everybody coming, have a great Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Stay safe.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Take care, guys.